Good morning.
Good morning. It feels like morning. It's a long day. I got a little, little sun.
Yeah, imagine that, huh?
Yeah. Okay, I guess it's seven o'clock, right? Everybody here?
Hi Ross, it's Julie. Um. We don't have Sue tonight. And Kathy is just joining and let me see. She's not hooked up yet and Ciara is still joining too, so.
Okay, I'll wait a minute.
I'm here. Okay. I just wanted to let you know that I'm gonna be driving home, so I might, um. Also just like login for my computer when I get home.
Okay.
Sucker life.
I'm on as well as Kathy.
Okay, welcome everybody to Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, regular meeting for April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. I'll call the meeting to order. Uh. We'll start with Rob.
Rob Horgan.
John Smolga.
Ciara Gorgleon.
Kathy Roz.
Okay, we do have a quorum. I'll see Kathy for Sue. Um.
Right?
Chris is on too.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. So who, who are we missing the regular members? Me, Rob, Sue. Sarah.
Um, you're missing Sue as a regular member.
Right, yeah, so I'll see Kathy for Sue. Uh, approval of minutes of regular meeting from March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four. Any comments on that?
Uh, just, just one on the Holmes Road, uh, vote. I abstained.
Okay, I'll fix that. Sorry about that.
Anything else? I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from March.
So.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, Sid Glover and Sue Nelson, one oh two North Street Installation at eight by forty-five inch ground pool, existing pool to be demolished, filled in with soil. Report on site visit. Uh. John, Cody, are you here?
I am letting John back in. He was having trouble with his mic. I'm also letting Sue Fitch in right now.
Okay. So Devin, you're, you're the, the new generation of Dobson Pools, huh? Is that it?
You wish. It's, uh, with the new generation of Litchfield County Pools.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, I am, I am related, but separate companies.
Cool, cool. You're all on the same thing, right?
I guess that's how it worked out.
Plenty of work to go around.
That's right, that's right. We gotta get, we gotta get HGTV up in this part of the woods.
That's right, that's right. Um. I didn't get a chance to go out, but John Cody went out and he told me that, that this is absolutely no problem.
Okay, yeah.
With, with that, I, I will make a motion to approve, uh, the pool at one oh two North Street.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, David and Laura Miller wanna.
Thank you.
Sit, no problem, Devin. Nice to meet you.
You, you as well.
Yep. Uh. I did the sidewalk on Mr. And Mrs. Miller's. Uh, property on Ruckham Road. They bought the property a long time ago for, as a woodlot. Those were the days, right? You could buy property just to cut wood off it. But now, um. His son, uh, is, is planning on. Building a house there with, uh, Brian Neff's daughter. Are they married, Brian?
Uh, no, but soon to be married.
Let's hope so. Who gets the house? Um, and the only problem with the, with this whole application is the driveway is a rough. Rough, um, rough to, to get in there, cause it goes up a steep slope. There's an existing, uh. Way in there now, just so they could cut some trees. And, uh, I question why we couldn't use that, but David told me that. It didn't meet the. Fifteen percent minimum that's required in Roxbury. So. Julie, could you bring the driveway up? I'm just seeing so, soil erosion sediment notes.
Alright, sorry, I'm even having technical difficulties going on here. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Here we go.
Yeah.
And I've got John on speakerphone on my cell, so. He's coming through my mic, cause he's still having trouble.
Okay, you wanna pull it up a little?
Yeah.
Chris is trying to get into the room.
So, what, what this is is a ridge. It's a big ridge and on both sides of it, there are wetlands. There's little intermittent water course. Uh, you could see. You, you could see the wetlands on both sides and I can't really. This is, I, I don't need a driveway on this.
It's, it's there, but it's very light.
Oh, I see it. So it starts from the road, it goes up straight and takes a left-hand turn. Goes around that large circle, that blue dotted circle and goes up to the house site. Um, it is within a hundred feet of. That stream there, they're, they're.
Not even being told she's in the way anymore.
Pardon?
Okay, sorry about that.
Could you zoom in just a little? There, that's better. Could everybody see the driveway?
Yeah, what are all the yellow flags all over the screen?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not sure. That's not on the original plan.
That's not, I'm not. Um, is there?
No, it isn't.
Is it in the key, like on the bo- bottom left? I can't read it.
No, no, it isn't. I'm, I'm not sure what those little boxes are.
Okay, well, let's pretend they're nothing.
Well.
Um.
It's probably just changes they made on the computer, it looks like, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
Project.
Yeah, the, um, house site is, is, uh. Kind of up toward the, the, the middle of the property itself. So when Dave was out there, he kinda cut a straight path right, like a straight line. Just kind of on the right-hand side, right up to the house site. Do some tree clearing and stuff like that. But it's too steep. It's actually, um. Or it's a bit of close to twenty percent grade. So it's accessible for some equipment, but it's not, it's not really good for a driveway.
Okay.
So I looked at any way to modify that, but I really couldn't cut the grade slope down without actually going into regulated area. So I redesigned the driveway to, to swing over to the left and around the steeper area and up to the house site. So we're just clearing the hundred-foot setback to the edge of the, um, limited disturbance. I really didn't wanna go into that, that area if necessary. So it's kinda graded around that circle and then up to the house site.
Anybody have any questions? I, I really didn't have a problem with this. I think the driveway, the way Brian's. Designed it is really the best way in.
I really can't see it, Russ. I'm sorry. I, I, I just can't see that. It's too far out. I can't read any of this. I, I don't know. I can't get it to zoom in. Um, so. It's hard to.
Where, where exactly is this on Rocky Mountain?
No, on Rockham.
Ruckham Road.
Oh, and, oh, this is Ruckham.
Woodbury Line.
Got it.
Before the pavement ending.
Oh, on the left-hand side?
On the left-hand side, the drive, the driveway entrance is already in.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
There's the driveway entrance. Thanks, Julie.
Yeah, much.
Show your man going up the driveway, if you can see it. I could see it, but. There, see that Kathy?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah.
So it's within the hundred foot buffer.
He, he kept the driveway right at the line. See where the line is?
That red line, Kathy.
A hundred, hundred-foot upland review area. It ends right at the driveway.
Yeah, I purposely tried to stay out of that hundred-foot upland review area with the driveway.
Any questions? I'll look for a motion. Somebody?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
As a regulated activity?
Okay, we have a motion from John. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Oh, sorry.
Any discussions? All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Okay, Brian, good luck and congratulations. Dave Miller's kid's a great kid, as I'm sure you know.
Jenny is too.
Yeah, I never met her, but.
They're, they're, they're a good couple. They really are.
Oh, cool, cool. Glad to hear that. Glad young people are moving to town. Tell them to make a lot of babies. You gotta fill up booth free.
Okay.
Alright. What are we on to? Oh, this is just a shed that John could approve. But it's since they took the time to. Submit this, uh, this is just the shed that they're putting up.
So there's a, there's an existing shed right now. That's a two-bay shed. Um, and I wanted to add another two bays to it, so it'd be four bays total. Um, if you'd been out to the property, there, I've got a number of pieces of farm equipment. Um, implements and so forth sitting about. I just wanted to get them undercover. So I wanted to add just two basics. Keep the existing, um, structure and then just add on to it.
Yeah, I didn't see a problem with this. Anybody have any?
Or any white lands around there?
Uh, there's a, there's a stream that runs behind it. There's intermittent water.
Intermittent, intermittent stream?
Yes.
Right behind it and then it takes a, a left towards North Street.
Is, is that intermittent stream? Hold on a minute. Um, is that kind of like an old road?
The road actually, from what I'm being told, um, runs in front of. I, I think that road actually went all the way up to, uh, Patriot Hill at one time, a long time ago.
Right, but, but the, the intermittent streams between the two stone walls.
Yeah.
Which makes me think it was an old ro- uh, an old roadway that just kinda.
Uh, yeah.
Turned into an intermittent stream.
It was, Rob, because if you remember Kathy and I, Kathy, I don't know if you remember, but we went out when they proposed the house.
I remember, yeah.
Right, and that, this was a driveway and it was gonna go up along that old road and then it crossed to the house site.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Glover bought the property and decided, I guess, not.
We, yeah, we're, we're not.
Or you're never subdivided.
We're not going to subdivide it now.
Right, right. So that application, even though it got approved, is kinda off the table. But the shed is, the shed is no big deal to the stream.
I don't have any problem with this.
Neither do I. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve this. I guess it will have to be a regulated activity.
Correct. I guess John did the right thing. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 You're doing a great job there, Sid.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Okay, John's report. W E O.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm dealing with some, like, three computer issues. Some on Chris's, but I finally got through to speak with you guys. If you look at my report, I put on the, the non-regulated permits that I approved last month as well. There's probably fifteen of those. Um, that's generic stuff. Nothing really that outrageous. Generators, sheds, stuff like that. The only things we have after are the NOVs that you'll see at the bottom of the screen. Which I'm sure we'll be addressing next.
Okay, on the NOV, I thought this was on the agenda. On the NOV for. Ruckham, Ruckham Road, right?
Correct.
What was it? Sixty Ruckham Road?
Correct.
Um, I went out. I talked to Doug. Um, he, he wasn't aware. But, but, but did we send this NOV to him, John? I.
Uh, yes, Russ. I sent the NOV to them. Um, they responded and so, yes, they.
Oh, and then, and then I went out, and then I went out.
Correct. This is, uh, I believe this is carried over.
Right.
Yes, this is carried over.
Right, so I went out and what they did. I had no problem with it. They just needed a permit. Uh, I think the commission would've went along. It is butt up against the wetland and the whole area that was cleared is a wet meadow, which is a wetland. Um, but they took out a bunch of dead trees and the dead trees are because the meadow was so wet. And probably with all this rain we're having, it just, it just ended, all these trees. And by doing what they did, they've expanded the wet meadow. Now I told him he's gonna have trouble mowing this thing, cause it's wet. Um, and he understood, but he said in the summer, it does dry up. And he's not looking to make a lawn. He wants to keep it a meadow, which he, we agreed that's, that's what would happen. And then he asked me, he wanted to control some of the water coming down the hill. So I referred him to a landscape architect to des- design a rain garden and I made him aware you'll need a permit for that. But the only problem with what they did was not getting a permit. And in this case, I blame the contractor. Uh, these tree guys really need to understand. They need permits when they clear cut and this was right up against the wetland. No erosion control, nothing. And we keep going after homeowners and I wonder if you hired an electrician? And they did work in your house without getting a permit, what would happen? Well, that electrician would lose his license. But these wood, wood people, I'll call them, uh, you know, they don't get anything. So I've asked John. To issue a notice of violation to the wood clearing company. Has that been done, John?
Yeah, yes, Russ. I did talk to Kurt Lanahan, issued the NOV to him. I got the return ad or signed receipt that he received it. But I, I believe, um, I did not forward this to Julie to put the NOV on the agenda. I apologize for that.
The, it, it's on here.
Oh, I did, alright, I shouldn't think.
It's Kurt here?
No.
This company is kind of notorious for this behavior, just as an FYI.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I just think this company is notorious for this behavior. It's not the first thing, you know?
Well, at the end of the day, as a, as the owner of the property, they're responsible if we were to. Issue a fine or whatever. So a- at the end of the day, it's really incumbent upon the owner of the home to know. And if they, and if we're finding that folks in town don't know, maybe we need to. Put a, put a, you know, a, a communication in the town newsletter or up our game a little bit on the. On the website and put it, put a header in there about, um, about this, just.
That's a good idea.
What you should know.
That's a good idea. Well, I'll take care of getting Pat to put that in the next town newsletter. And I told Pat I wanna picture my dog on the next one, not, not just his. But, but Doug, Doug seemed to me to be legitimate and, and truly sorry. He showed up at the meeting. He's a good guy. He didn't, um. I, I didn't see any malice in what he did. I do blame the contractor. The contractor has to know they need a permit. Um, and we, we gotta start going after contractors.
And, and what does that mean? Like, how, what would that look like, Russ, when you say we have to start going after?
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly what we're doing. You, you issue a notice of violation. They come in, explain their side of the story. And if it's the first time, you slap them on the hand and you hope that, and it's, in all likelihood, it's not gonna happen again with that contract.
Could we adjust our regulations to incorporate that?
Incorporate what?
Well, that the contractor's responsible, also not just.
Already, it's in the state regulations, Rob.
It is, okay.
Regulations hold the homeowner and the contractor responsible. It's up to the commission. Who they wanna go after, or they could go after both. But John, did Kyle, did Kurt say he was gonna be here?
Uh, I talked to him prior to issuing the NOV. I told him I had to be there and in the NOV it stated he had to attend. Um, I certainly can follow up this, with this for the next meeting, uh, with the stern letter.
Would you? Cause he needs to show up.
Definitely.
And if he decides not to show up, that's fine too, but then, then we'll talk it about, uh, talk about a heavy fine. So that's him.
I'll relay a stern, stern message.
When you cooperate, we'll work with you. When you don't wanna co- cooperate. Uh, you see what happened to one person who's still in court, so, um, that's up to him.
I'll relay that to him, Russ.
Hey, hey, Russ, I have just a couple, a couple of questions. One is, um. Are there restrictions on the mowing of this meadow, like twice a year?
No, well. Did, did Doug submit, uh, an application?
Uh, he was supposed to come in. I talked to him about doing it after the fact. We just never received. I could reach out to him and.
Reach out, because that's the deal I made with him. He needs to submit an after-the-fact application with a three hundred dot fifty dollar fee. Um, I told him he didn't really need to come to the meeting, but he could, because anybody on the commission could, uh, motion a fine.
I, I have.
And, and if he, and if he is here, then he could. Defend himself.
I, I have one more item on that, on this, and that's, uh, from the house. The terrain, uh, filters down or slopes down to the wetlands. And I'm thinking about fertilizers, pesticides, and things that are gonna be applied to the lawn.
Well, you already can't apply it per our regs, but. When he submits the application and we act on it, we could put all these, these, uh. Notes on it then.
Okay. I don't know how we enforce any of that.
But I still think it's important.
Oh, you can see it from the road. This is an easy one.
Well, the golf course down, down to the wetlands?
No, it's not a golf course at all, Rob.
No, I'm just saying, in the future, if you see beautiful green lawn down to the wetlands. You know.
Culture.
Yeah, again, he needs to submit an application, so we could do it then. Yeah, again, he needs to submit an application so we could do it then.
I, I, I had a question, Russ. So if he had, you know. What is the protocol that we would recommend, just so we're all clear, right? So there's. It's wet, there were trees, and he hired a contractor. The contractor should've pulled a permit. At which time we would have said, what?
I don't know.
We would do a site visit.
I don't know. I'm, I'm here in the, in the present, so I, I can't go back, but I can say that there's no. Ecological damage by what they did. And I don't wanna punish somebody just, just because they made a mistake, but they didn't cause any damage in that mistake. In fact, they made the ecology better by expanding a wet meadow. Wet meadows are rare. And they're very great ecological features. I agree with Rob. If you start fertilizing them and turn them into lawns, you destroy their function. And that function of that meadow is to filter all that water that's pouring out of the hillside. There's springs all over the place that trickle down into a very viable swamp.
Well.
So. I mean. I would've, I would've been in favor if, if it was presented to me. That, you know, if he, he would've, he would've had to hire an environmental person to present that to us.
Yeah, I, I, I struggle with the statement that there was no impact because. I mean, there was impact. This was removed. There wasn't any, you know, um, to, um, attempt to, um. Uh. Minimize the impact of all this, uh. Equipment and whatever else you use to get, to get all the trees out and cut them down and all of that. So there was impact.
No, there's not, there's not. Right now, there is no impact. You go down there, take a look. There's no big, deep tread marks anywhere. It was well done. I have to say, it was well done. It just required a permit.
But I, but I think what, what we're really trying to do is we're not trying to let that decision be made by the homeowners or the contractors, but by the commission.
And that's why we issued a notice violation to both.
But do we, you mentioned that he would've had to have had a envi- an environmental assessment done of it.
Again, I, I can't predict what we would've done, but what's there is there. What, what happened, happened. And we need to take it from here.
Is it worth getting an environmental assessment at this time?
That's up to the commission. I don't think it's necessary and I don't wanna punish somebody who made a mistake. We've never done that and I don't wanna become that kind of commission. These, these are our neighbors and these are our people who live in town and the ones who make mistakes. Who come into the meeting and fess up to it and say, what can I do to fix this? I don't wanna punish those people. I mean, you, 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 you all have the right to, to do whatever. Pardon?
I said I agree with Russ. I don't think any malice was intended in this situation. Do you make mistakes?
I, I guess I would've, I would've, I would've not used the word punishment. I, I, I just, I don't see it as a punishment. It's just a question as to whether or not that that's, that's helpful at this time. I, I agree. It's not intended to punish anyone. Absolutely agree with all the other statements.
Does anybody else have anything to say on this?
I'd just say, let's get them both in here for next meeting.
That's right. Okay, John, would you follow up with both of them, please, and make sure he submits an application?
I wrote it down, Russ. Will do.
Okay, your next one is NOV on Mine Hill.
John, you wanna go on this?
Yeah, sure. This one is a little bit more extensive. Um. There's a slight history to this cuz several years ago, I was there talking to the homeowners about. Road runoff running into their pool. And I told them that they would, if they had any intention of doing anything, they would have to go through wetlands. Um, that was probably two, maybe three years ago. And, uh, last month I got a phone call that there was activity there. Uh, extensive activity, I like to say. If Julie, you wanna pull it up, we can look at the pictures.
Yeah.
You'll see that they dredged the pond, or they were actually in the process of dredging the pond. The picture above, you'll see where they, they ran the curtain drains into a stream that feeds the pond. And there's another picture, Julie. Uh, there should be one where they were, they actually dredged the stream itself that feeds the pond from above. It's, um, in my opinion, it's a rather extensive violation. Um. It, it's definitely significant activity.
How much of the stream did they dig out, John?
Well, they probably dug it down a good foot and a half, maybe widened it.
No, but how long?
Uh, if I was gonna estimate, I would say three hundred feet.
A hundred feet?
No, two hundred feet, we'll call it.
Well, that's an Army Corps violation.
It, it's, again, it's a significant activity.
Well, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna file a complaint with the Army Corps of Engineers and they'll double team on this. Now, were they asked to come? Have you talked to them? Were they asked to come to this meeting?
Uh, they got their letter. I got the certified response. I never got any response from them. I actually drove by the property twice and I, I don't know if they're weekenders, but I never, I didn't see a car either time after the NOV.
And the NOV states they're supposed to come to this meeting?
Correct.
Well, I think what we do is write them another letter and say if they don't come to the next meeting, we're gonna take legal action. And we're also going to call in the State Department of, uh. Energy and Environmental Protection.
I will do that.
Because, because of the egregiousness of this violation, which violates federal regulations.
I'll incorporate that.
Sorry, excuse me.
And I've met, I don't know if they're the same people cuz who knows who buys, who sells, but I met with them. Four or five years ago cuz of their complaint about the road runoff.
That was the same issue, Russ. I cut it short. I wasn't sure if it was that old, but we definitely had an issue prior.
What I proved to them is. That the road runoff went into the stream and it always went into the stream. And that the problem with their pool was they had poor drainage and they needed to put in curtain drains. And I showed them what to do. They were pretty nice about it. They weren't happy. Cuz they were looking for the town to pick up the tab, like everybody. Um, and then I never heard from them. So if, if it's the same people, but even if it's not, to, again, I wanna know who was the contractor on this?
Uh, I was talking to the people who were working there. Um. Very broken English. I couldn't get much out of them.
There were no trucks with names on it?
There was no names, no nothing, just, I, I couldn't say.
Have they done any work since you told them?
No, I've been by there several times. I was looking for the homeowners to see if a vehicle was there to engage in a conversation, but I've never seen any activity there whatsoever.
Okay, we have no way to get ahold of them.
Um, I can, I can do the same thing. I can send a letter certified. Uh, if we want to, we can utilize a marshal service.
Well, they signed it and sent it back, right?
Correct.
Yeah, there's no reason to send a marshal.
Yeah, no, I, I'm looking at it right now. It's signed and received.
Well, tell them, we'll give them one more chance to come to the meeting. Um, and if, and if they fail to, we will take legal action. And the way that happens is then we issue a cease and desist. Where they really have to come to the meeting. And if they, uh, if they fail at that, we'll have to take legal action.
John, when was, uh, the return receipt signed?
Um, let me take a look at it. I got it back on April thirty, April third, third.
So they've had plenty of time to respond to you.
Oh, certainly, yes.
I think there should be a cease and desist issued.
You mean now?
Yes.
Um, well, again, if we do the cease and desist, we'll have to hold a meeting within ten days, a special meeting?
Well, good, cuz I don't wanna have it during a real meeting cuz it might be a long time.
Sounds good.
I agree with Rob.
Okay, uh, Julie, what's a good date for you two weeks out? It has to be held within ten days. And John, you could issue it anytime. I mean, we don't have to issue it tonight.
Yep.
But I'd like to do this in like two weeks.
If you want, you can actually take up, uh. April thirtieth. There's nothing going on that night. It's a fifth Tuesday. That's a week from tonight. Be seven days out.
Well, we'd have to get this out tomorrow, John.
Yep, um, if, if you like, we could do that. I'll get out tomorrow. They'll probably get it the following day.
Well, I hear the commission on it. We have one set that says, give them one more chance. We have another set that says, issue the consent order. What does everybody wanna do on this?
I, I'm good with the consent order.
Consent order.
Agreed. I, I just have one question. Is this something that, um, the contractors themselves should be notified consistently?
We have no contact information with the contractors. They spoke strictly Spanish.
Yeah, we, we would have to during the cease and desist meeting ask that question.
Okay.
And then I recommend to the commission, again, we issue a notice of violation to that contractor and fine them.
But I also feel, Russ, that the people are also responsible for who they choose to bring on their property and hire cuz they know.
Right. Right.
You know, they, they know who they're bringing on the property. So it's like, you know, us like. You know, trying to determine who came on the property to do the work. If, you know, I'm not, um, speculating what the circumstances were. But they know who they hired, so it's their responsibility, the owners.
No, I agree, but we, we need to go after contractors, so we need to start doing that.
No, I'm not, well, I, I'm saying that, but I'm also saying that I feel that. A lot of these homeowners are trying to cut corners and they also know who they're bringing on.
Right, right, right.
I mean, this case is really bad, but, I mean, I don't, I think the other. Case, maybe they didn't really know what the rules and regulations were. A lot of times people. Hire someone and they kind of expect them to do what they need to do. Like they do with other contractors, like you were saying, electricians or plumbing and things like that. So. I don't know. Sometimes when it's like a little mistake and they're truly, like they truly didn't mean to do it. I don't know. I think maybe it's like, like the first one was definitely, the previous case was very, was definitely different than this one. Like this is a huge violation.
Uh, well, yes, I agree. The other case was just the tree cutting. Um, they probably did not know. You know, they were just dropping the trees, not realizing it was wetlands cuz there was no skunk cabbage growing at the time of that. This is blatant. It's in your face.
Yeah, we can't let.
It's probably like a difference. I don't feel that we should necessarily like go after every single person if they truly didn't mean to do something. And it was small. That's just my perspective.
Well, we really have to stand strong as a commission against this kind of stuff. Because weekenders are gonna do this unless we, we stand up tall and, and go at them. It's unfortunate Voices doesn't cover us anymore. Uh, because they used to be a great source of information and it would be an embarrassment to some people. To have this written up in the newspaper and it really helped me in the past. Get people to, to, uh, to comply. But now, I don't know why, but Voices doesn't really cover Roxbury very much, probably cuz they can't find a reporter. Um, so it's hard to get the word out about these things.
Could, could, could we dialogue with them about it, Voices?
I could reach out tomorrow.
Yeah, John, call them. Ask them. There's all kinds of good stuff going on in Roxbury. And all the wetland commissions they're reporting on, it's boring. I mean, it's boring stuff. Like, pick the good, pick the commissions with the twenty-one thousand square foot homes, you know?
I'll reach out to them and, um, get a response.
Actually, Russ, they, a couple of weeks ago, they had the information on the meeting.
Yeah, I, I thought as well, Sue, I, I, I wondered i- if, if Russ, you were speaking specifically about something. Other than just general meeting coverage, or were you speaking more specifically about violations and having a little, you know?
No, I, I, I think Voices is a little stretched then. I'm not blaming them at all. I, I think, but they used to cover us more. And it helped a lot in, in, in this kind of stuff. Um. And we'll, we'll have to go from there, but John, if you could call them, just, you know. M- maybe what we could do is let them know when there, there's a violation that's worth nor, uh, newspaper worthy. Or.
Yeah, that's no problem at all. I could, uh.
A very complicated application that we think people in town really would wanna know about.
Cuz I could do that.
Go to Voices for their news in this town. And what a very Republican doesn't really cover us anymore. Um, the coverage has shrunk, so we'll have to go from there, but this, this is an egregious violation. We need to stand strong as a commission. I know it's expensive. You know it's expensive. I mean, the other lawsuit was very expensive to the town. Um. I, I, I'm gonna go into an executive session, one meeting and talk about attorneys. And, 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 you know, the commission does not have to use the town attorney. We could pick our own attorneys. But the town has separated our legal budget out of the general budget. We never had a line item for, for legal, but because the legal expenses are going up. We think it's more, uh, transparent to have it as a separate line item. And when we've increased that line, line, line item significantly. Because we're preparing, uh, to have to take on these battles. And not shy away from them because it may be expensive. Now, you know, we could go to court and get our money back, our attorney fees. But you can see with certain cases, they take years. It, it, the justice system is broken. It really is. It takes years. And then by the time you get in there to try to recoup your money, everybody's tired, you know? It's just not a good system. I, I personally think violations such as this should go straight to the state. The state should take this over. They're the ones, this is their regulations. We as volunteers administer it. I don't know why we're the ones that have to, I, I, I can't tell you how much time I had to spend in court. It's not fair to a volunteer to have to do that because somebody refuses to cooperate with a commission. But this is where we're at and we're gonna have to stand up strong and do what we gotta do to, to let people know they're not gonna just come to this town. And do what they want and ask how much the fine is. Cuz the fine could be substantial. So John, the one other thing you need to do on here, Deep has a complaint. Uh, on their website to file complaints, as you know. Because we had a complaint filed against us, right?
Correct. I could reach out to Chris tomorrow. I have his email.
Reach out to Chris. Tell him over two hundred feet. Ask him if they're interested or. He may say no if the commission is on it, but we're not gonna get involved and that's fine.
I, I'll see what he has to say.
Okay. All right, next, John.
Uh, one question, Russ, sir. Are we gonna meet on this again next Tuesday?
Yes, okay, good.
Okay, so you'd like to have a special meeting next Tuesday?
Yeah, is everybody okay with that? I need at least three of you here.
I'm good.
I'm good.
I think I am.
I'll be here. It's not a selectmen meeting, right? No, that's, that's the week after.
I can be here.
I can be present as well.
Okay.
All right, next.
Okay, I'd like to touch base in this one first. This is a stop work order. Um, I got a call about some activity on Rocky Mountain Road. I went up there and there was definite activity on the property. They were starting to cut in a driveway or accessway, something of that sort. I reached out to the home, oh, the, the homeowner, Kyle Conway. I reached out to the home, oh, the homeowner, Kyle Conway. And, uh, he immediately got back to me. We started discussing. Um, what we, what we figured out was he jumped the gun. He was in the process of subdivide or removing a property line and stuff like that. So he told me he was in the process of getting his maps done and this kind of thing. So instead of issuing an NOV right off the bat, if you're gonna stop work order, it would be a better avenue to go down. Uh, so that's what we did. And he did submit stuff. Brian dropped it off today for the meeting. And, um, that's where we stand right now. Hello?
Yeah, we're here. Russ is on mute now, John.
Does he know he's on mute?
Yeah, he's also his screen one.
Yeah, we lost the picture.
But his name's still up there.
I'm here. I, I had to show my son how to cook a lasagna. I'm sorry. Dinner time for the kid. Um, I'm here. I heard you, John.
So Russ, I'm gonna step down from this one?
Yep. So I'll see Chris.
As will I.
Great. Well, you're not seated, Kathy.
Oh, good. So then I don't have to step down. Good.
Um, actually, hold on. Kathy was never unseated and Sue was never seated.
All right, I'll seat Sue for Kathy.
Okay.
And I'll see Chris for, for John.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect, okay.
So is he here, John?
I do believe Kyle's here and, uh, Brian Neff is also still on and he dropped off the maps to explain everything as well.
So what, what is Kyle trying to do?
I'm here.
Hi, Kyle.
Hello.
So what are you building a driveway? Is that?
Um, the plan is now I just want to be able to access the back of my property. Um, and that the way shown on, on this drawing is, is, is the best way to get there, basically.
And Brian, you, you checked this out and is it all good?
Yeah, I got a call from Kyle, went out there and took a look at what was under construction. So it's kind of a document of what he's done in terms of there's a section driveway under construction. There's a culvert underneath the driveway. There's some rip rap on the inside of the pipe. Um, I recommended that you put some silt fence down below the stockpile area and some hay bales in the channel uh, as erosion control measures. At least temporarily.
I also talked to Kyle today and, and stressed that on him as well.
Where, where are the wetlands on this?
Uh, there's an intermittent stream is the issue.
Is that the swale?
Yeah, it's a labeled as swale. It's, looks like it had been dug out a long time ago. Um, like a channel dug down through the property. Probably, I don't even know how long, maybe forty, fifty years ago, something like that. But it is carrying water. Um, and goes down to Rocky Mountain Road.
Okay, and, and Kyle, you're trying to get to the the other side of your property, right? On the other side of that?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, basically from there it just goes uphill, um, after that.
And what's the purpose? Like, what are you gonna be doing up there? Do you have plans?
Well, um, maybe at some point I would be proposing to build, um, there's an adjacent lot that has already been approved for a house. Um, but right now I just wanna be able to have a, a drivable access, um, from there, um, and then go up the mountain from there.
Okay.
Kyle, is that property on the south side of this drawing? Up where that trail is? On the top of the screen? Is that where the property is?
That's yes, yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
Well, well, so is the plan just to do this part of the driveway or are you planning on, do you want to continue it?
For now, this is all I really want to do, um, and then.
You're done, Kyle? You're kind of, you're done?
Well, it needs, it needs to be, um, landscaped and tidied up, but that they, um, and, and a top layer of, of stone, um, but that's about it, yeah.
Okay. So you just want to finish it by cleaning it up and landscape?
Yeah.
But there's not gonna be any more tree cutting and bulldozing?
Well, I was gonna do some more tree cutting, but that would be about the extent of, of the driveway work, um, through that area, yeah.
All right, well, well, uh, since we have an application, we will set up a sidewalk. Take a look at this. If you would please, uh, flag the trees you want to cut down. You know, just tie ribbon around them so we could, so we could see how many more trees are gonna come down?
Okay.
Um, I think if you're gonna cut, well, yeah, Brian put in a silk fence. Okay. All right. Any other questions? Having heard none, we'll see you next month.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, now it's time for your chair report, Russ.
My chair report?
Yep, that's, I have that on. And then we have, uh, you guys are, if you want to go through the West Cog Wetlands report, you would be on item ten if you want to do that tonight.
I don't, I don't have anything to report. Um, I, I do want to say that Barbara Henry, we're having a thing for Barbara on Thursday at noon at the senior center because we are naming the senior center after her. And she does not know about it. So please, I just want everybody here to know if they can make it, it'd be great because Barbara deserves this.
She's on the Zoom call.
Huh?
She's on this Zoom call.
I hope not, but if she is, oh, well, sorry. She's gonna find out sooner or later, so. And that's it. So where are we on this West Cog report?
Um, you are, you got through seven, eight and nine the last time. And so the next section would be state inland wetlands program improvements. Eleven through fourteen or ten through fourteen.
Anybody have any comments on eleven through fourteen? I kind of agree with all of it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we need to kind of pull forward what was developed by Norwalk. And Wilton, I know it's in the report, but it's not here for folks to look at. So it's hard to say, you know, what does that mean?
Yeah. Agreed.
Um, and you know, it certainly was, we kind of heard it tonight, minor, you know, major, moderate, significant, whatever. So um, I'm happy to go do that, to pull it forward and, um, you know?
I like that idea. I, I think they're trying to move towards letting wetland agents approve things, more things, but the wetland agents need to be properly trained, which means they're gonna have to take the forty hour Army Corps course. But I agree with that. And then the one thing I don't agree with that's not in here, but they're talking about making, uh, DEP regional permit centers. So get rid of wetland commissions and hire professionals at DEEP to review permits. That would be a nightmare. It also takes away local control, which the state is trying to do on many fronts. I'm not sure why. Uh, but they are trying to get us to act like counties and not like towns. Um, I would like to, when we write up this letter, I would like to state that, you know, the enforcement of major violations should be taken on by the state and not by the municipality or town. The state should take it over. It shouldn't be the taxpayers in the town paying because somebody's violating state regulations. And it wouldn't have to be that way if the lawyers didn't make it the way the lawyers have made it. As I've witnessed in, in my accounting with the courts, with wetlands, it's a broken system. And the lawyers are all making a lot of money doing it. And the judges don't seem to really care. They keep giving extensions and so, uh, I really think the state should step up to the plate and start taking an active role in wetland enforcement. Anybody else?
No, I, I agree, Russ. I mean, I've seen it deteriorate over, over the years. Um, I, I just don't see the state doing it, though.
Well, they have made changes that, uh, I went to a conference, a wetland conference. They, they do have a large group of forty-three people now on the wetlands.
Do they?
Yeah. Um, and, and they have a website now where you can file complaints. And, um, Dennis McDonald took advantage of that website to file complaint to claim that we allowed Mark Low to put in a culvert without a permit. DEP investigated it and found that we did nothing wrong.
Oh, is that how that happened? Okay. All right. So Russ, how would that work? I mean, if there was a violation, we would just contact the state and say, here, take care of this? Or it would go to the fining, you know, stage, and then they would take over or when it got to the court?
No, if it was like this one with this last major violation, which was you know, in, in your face kind of violation, that would just, the state would take it over and deal with it. And they would have to hire a couple of professional people to, uh, to look at, um, you know, the, the technical aspects and have a lawyer, um, sue the, sue the violating party and not have the towns do it. The Attorney General's Office should be doing that.
So, so one is, you know, just, you know, the when there is a lawsuit and, and kind of managing or a violation and kind of managing that piece, the other is just wetlands in general and do we keep it at a local level? Or is there some combination of local and state? So if it's major, it goes to state. If it's a minor, moderate, it stays at the local, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't know what the, what the right answer is. I, you know, I, I, like you, Russ, I, I hesitate to, to, to say this should all go to the state for sure. Um, but is there some, is there some, some cases that makes sense to bring in state?
I think that the state needs to provide more support for wetland commissions. And they don't. They, they handed this off to the towns and cities and walked away from it.
And certainly.
In fact, with, with the last, uh, lawsuit, the state is supposed to join the lawsuit and on ours, they didn't. They chose not to. They, they should have been involved. But I think they saw that as too small to get involved in, and I get that. But it may have been small, but it was expensive. I could tell you that.
For sure, for sure. Yeah, so, you know, for the, I, I, I don't know the action on this other than to just delve deeper into minor, moderate, significant and kind of understand what that is and kind of look at it. I think we're kind of in agreement about things staying at a local level. I think the point of, you know, see Connecticut DEEP being involved is just water connects us all, right? So what somebody does to water in one town, it it, it affect, it, we're all connected through this water, so, um, yeah.
But I think I'm just gonna put something in there. I think I think that with the state not getting involved in something that's more significant, I feel that a lot of times a lot of the people that are doing the violation that they're like, it's Trump change and they don't really care and what's really gonna happen. And I feel, you know, with us um, saying something and I feel if the state backed us up, that maybe more people would be taking the regulation seriously.
Yeah, right. But you know, what we did, what we've been doing, Sue, we haven't done it a lot, but we lean to property. And that wakes up these people. When you lean their property, they, they'll, they'll wake up.
But, but the leaning of the properties after, after the decision, after the fines been imposed and they haven't paid it.
Right.
Okay, so the property's leaned while it goes through the court process?
Correct.
Okay. Did we do that with, with, uh, Garnet Road?
And she paid it. After, after we did.
So, so with respect to number thirteen, this is encourage state legislature. I mean, this is a, a letter, I think that Russ, we're all talking about at some point, there is some, you know, some form of memo or communication that says we looked at this and this is our recommendation. So I think that at the end of this discussion on these points, we'll have something written to send that, that supports number thirteen, encourage you. Is that, is that your thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, we're not talking about this just to talk the most ourselves. I want to send a letter to the north, to the west, to the southwest cog and.
And I guess the state legislature as, as well, right? That's what number thirteen says.
Yeah, but, but we're not, we're not talking about the, the entire number thirteen, which is referring to septic systems and things like that. We're just talking about communication to the state legislator.
Yes.
And on all these items, not specifically the rest of number thirteen.
Right. Right. Just the general agreement with the, with, what we agree with and disagreement with what we don't agree with, like doing away with commissions, having regional permitting, things like the Army Corps does now. The Army Corps has regional offices that issue Army Corps permits. But the Army Corps is very, it's, it's, it's very, uh, it's intense development that has to go to the Army Corps.
But, but, but Rob, on your point for number thirteen, I mean, do, does this commission have a point of view on, on that notion?
Well, we're not gonna encourage the state legislators. The West Cog is. We're gonna tell the West Cog we support that.
But specifically on the point of prohibiting septic systems installed within one hundred feet of rivers and streams?
We already could do that. Newtown, Newtown just changed their regs to a hundred feet for septic. So we're part of Newtown. So even though before conflicted because they were fifty, they were twenty-five feet at one time. Not, then they went to fifty, now they went to a hundred. Why? Cause putting it closer than a hundred feet doesn't work. I don't know why it took them so long to figure that out. But unfortunately, Roxbury Health Code has not changed. It's still fifty feet. Newtown's did, but ours didn't. Just because we're part of the Newtown, uh, health system, we have to change ours to a hundred feet. And I'm working with the Board of Selectment to do that.
And is that, is that a zoning change, Russ, specifically? Or what, where, where does that change?
No, it's a health code change. It's in an ordinance.
Russ, I do have a question on that, though. Is it a hundred feet? It just rivers and streams, not wetlands?
Well, we can make it wetlands.
No, 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 but I thought, I thought it was, uh, not such a bad thing to have a septic system near a functioning wetland because it does act as a filtration system for water.
No.
Oh.
The problem is if the system fails, the wetlands are doomed.
Okay.
And a hundred feet is a good buffer. Kathy, were you able to watch the, uh, buffer?
I did. I sat through that, um.
Good. I, I got tied up in a call and I, I never made it, so.
This was a repair and buffer, um, uh, WebEx or, or Zoom meeting that, um, I guess DEEP, did DEEP sponsor it? I think DEEP sponsored it. You, you clearly sponsored it. Thank you. And, um, you know, it was very interesting. I, I certainly, you know, And, um, you know, it was very interesting, I, I certainly, you know, I was happy I could, could listen to it, it was um, more about, um, repairing and remediating where there's been impact to repair and buffers. And then it also just got into really the importance of repair and buffers, particularly with, um, you know, protecting the, the wildlife, that it's, that it's such a critical space for their habitat. The, the, um, rotting logs and things like that, that are just critical for their survival, they, they um, so it was, it was very interesting.
Good, remember that the next time somebody comes in saying the buffer zone, it's not gonna have an impact, cause they're not looking at it the right way.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to join on that, but just to give myself some more education of what, buffer zones are important. And what the courts did is they devalued our regulations by stating that we cannot regulate buffer zones like we do wetlands. The only time we could regulate the buffer zone is, is if there's a direct impact to the wetland. But the buffer zone is what protects it. So it was a dumb decision made by a judge who's not educated in environmental protection. And that's the problem with the system.
Kathy, do you know if they recorded that, cause I wasn't able to get on that.
I think they did, I, I'm gonna search for a link and, um, send it, um, Julie to you to ask that you send it out to everyone, so.
That'd be great, Kathy, I'd really like to watch that, especially before another application comes in with people wanting to uh, build a house in a buffer zone saying it's not gonna have an impact. Because it does, and I see it all over the place. I'm sure all of you, when you go down, uh, you know, Fairfield County, you say, how did the commission approve that?
Yeah.
It amazes me. Right on the river. So, I think that's a good point they made here, is we need to have buffer zones where you just can't build in them. Don't even propose it, you can't build in them. Vermont has a hundred-foot buffer zone, can't build in them. No reason, no way, done. I think it's a good, it's a good thing.
I think it'd make things simpler, too.
Right. Right. You don't have to listen to professionals who claim there won't be an impact. And then when there is, three years later, the professional is gone, there's no, there's no accountability, there really isn't. All right, is that it?
I, I was just gonna comment on fourteen, just to say that I think that this is a non-issue for us, cause we have um, properly trained, we've got Russ, and he really helps us.
We got John, too.
We got John, and we got, we got some really good resources.
So you're saying we're scraping bottom, huh?
Hey, all right. So, uh, is that it, gang? I'll, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? See you all Tuesday.
All right.
Yeah, next week.
Seven, is that seven on Tuesday?
Seven o'clock on Tuesday, I'll send out an invite tomorrow.
Okay, thanks. Good night.
Good night.